This time I'll ask Commissioner Shackleford if he'll have the invocation and the plates of the flag of our great nation.
Our Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Father, I ask that we get closer to, as we get closer to the end of the year, may the God of peace bring to peace to our nation. May togetherness of this spirit continue to guide us and may be the Lord bring peace to and understanding to protect the world. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Our Commissioners, do you have the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting? Is there any need for any change in the proposed agenda?
Seeing no changes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Need further discussion?
I wanted to add this to the thing tonight or break to a next meeting. This is a question, so it's a closed session.
Hearing the request for change, it's going to be technicalities. It's going to be discussed in any closed session. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. The ayes have the motions carried. We also have our consent agenda for tonight. Is there any need for change, any additions, additions, modifications to anything on the consent, proposed consent agenda?
What changed the economic budget?
More money was received from Commerce for a grant that we are a pass-through agency for. And the second one recognizes that increase.
It's a very small amount.
There's two spelling errors in minutes with Sand Hill and Tree. Other than that, I move to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda and the County Administration is aware of those two spelling errors. You will have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, need further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. The ayes have the motions carried unanimously. No comments?
There's one. It's Mr. Salvador Canoco and it said question slash concern.
And concerns. Thank you. Good evening Commissioners. I will not take your time much longer today. Today I come with a couple of concerns that I have for you guys. Before I say, I wanted to say this has nothing to do, nothing personal, nothing political. It's just a concern that I have. On the budget approved July 1st, 2023, you guys gave and approved a raise to the county employees in 5%. Great. That same day, you guys approved a, and awarded yourselves a 106%, repeat, 106% increase in y'all's compensation, y'all's pay. That's okay. But these self-serving raises more than doubled through monthly allowances. These self-serving raises were never discussed in a public meeting, an open public meeting. They were never discussed in a closed session. And if they were, then you guys broke the law. But there's no recording of it. And I wanted to ask one question. What made you guys feel that y'all deserve 106% increase when the county employees receive 5%? That's the real question that I have. Because there's so many great employees that work for our county that deserves more than 5%. And I think it's a little bit selfish or greedy. And y'all still have to award yourselves 106%. I think the taxpayers would love to know too. And more importantly, employees.
I will make a comment about that.
Sure.
And if you looked at the pay scale for the three county commissioners, we're the third from the bottom in the state. We were not considered in the two previous pay studies that we had. That pay increase puts us about mid-range, 47 out of 100. So I don't think it's a travesty.
With all due respect, I'm not here to question that. I'm here to question the integrity of why was it not public? Why was it in a closed session? Why was it never discussed or not added in the budget workshop that was had? That's all the clear question. You giving yourselves, you guys are entitled to vote for your pay raise. That's not, that's not a problem.
We did.
But 106%?
We did so in the budget.
106%?
We went from third from the bottom to mid-range and that's, you know.
What about the county employees, sir?
And we did not discuss it in closed session.
But what about the county employees, sir? I think they deserve better. With all due respect, I will be back. My time is gone. I will come back. Thank you.
And just for the record, we did have two pay studies done. We've given significant increases to our employees. We value our employees as much as anybody does.
5%.
Our presentations. Ms. Bacassala.
I'm terrible liar. Just nod.
Okay. My name is Leanne Bacassala and I am Audit Director at Molson Jenkins. And this is our second year serving as your external auditor. Can you switch to the next one or do you have a question?
I'm just pushing the button.
Okay, just go ahead. So tonight's presentation, I do want to go over your audit results for fiscal year 2023. But I have a couple of things I wanted to go through if you'll go to the next slide. The first thing I wanted to go through is who Molson Jenkins is to give you an idea. We have over 100 years of service. We're based out of Atlanta, Georgia. But we are operating in six states and we have 13 offices. So Riley, North Carolina office just had their one-year anniversary celebration. We've been open for one year. We have over 16 government partners and a lot of employees. A third of our practice at Molson Jenkins is government clients. In terms of your team, it's very small on the bottom, but I served as your engagement director. I was one that ultimately assigned your audit opinions. Tim Lyons served as your quality review partner. Every audit that we do has a second partner that goes in and reviews after the first partner. They're there to make sure that we did our job. And then you had several senior associates and staff that worked on the county audit. So this next slide I wanted to go through is your audit opinion over your financial statements. Just to give you an idea of what our opinion says. The first thing it says is we consider the internal control structure of the county for purposes of reviewing the basic financial statements, but not for the purpose of providing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. Our audit was performed in accordance with government generally accepted accounting standards and government accounting standards. Our objective is to provide reasonable but not absolute assurance that your basic financial statements are free of material misstatement. But ultimately, the financial statements are the responsibility of county's management. For your financial statement opinion, you receive an unmodified or a clean opinion. Thus, the highest level assurance that we can provide that your financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. But our responsibility does not extend beyond that financial information in the, in your financial statements. On the next slide are your other three opinions that you received. One is called a Yellow Book Report or a Government Auditing Standards Report. That opinion, basically, we test the county's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. That report is not intended to provide an opinion on internal controls, nor is it intended to provide a legal determination of the county's compliance with applicable laws and regulations. That report is done in accordance with government auditing standards. You receive a clean audit opinion, but there are two material weaknesses noted that we will go over in the next slide. And then because the county receives so much federal and state funding throughout the year, we had to do a single audit for the year and we had to test seven major programs. We did four federal programs and three state programs. From a federal perspective, we tested a lot of your large grants, your Medicaid, SNAP, child support enforcement and formula grant. And then from a state perspective, we tested stream debris, royal building reuse and SCADA. And then you received two audit opinions related to your compliance with federal and state grants. From a federal perspective, you received an unmodified opinion on compliance. And then from a state perspective, you received another unmodified opinion with one significant deficiency. So altogether, you received four audit opinions and they were all unmodified or clean audit opinions. And if you go to the next slide, I will try to explain some of the findings that we had. So for the first one, there was a prior period adjustment in the financial statements to make sure that we were properly recording the revenue and the utility fund. That prior period adjustment was for $275,780. Because we had to restate prior year financial statements, that automatically is a material weakness. However, this is definitely something that can be updated going into this next year. So this never happens again. And this literally was a result of a report just being pulled incorrectly. And so now there was a formal process for pulling that report so this doesn't happen again in future years. The next finding is called a, basically reporting on the long-term debt and related balances. Within your, one of your funds, your SCADA funds, the receipt of debt, between loan revenue and proceeds of debt and also recording a loan payable, was it done correctly? And that resulted in some audit adjustments for $99,951. Because that is a very, very small fund, that did result in a material weakness. And like I said, this is something that can be fixed going forward. So I know management is well aware of how to record that in the fund going forward because that money's going to continue to come in. And then the third finding is a significant deficiency of our cash management reporting. This is a single audit finding. It was for the stream debris grant. And basically, the person that was completing the reimbursement request, where they submitting to the state reimbursements and their quarterly progress reports that are submitted to the state, they were prepared by and reviewed by the same person. And here in this finding, we're just saying there should be segregation of duties. We didn't define anything wrong with these reports. They were completed accurately. It's just that someone should prepare it and someone should review it to have a proper control in place. Does anyone have any questions over those findings? Okay, well, we can go onto the next slide. There are a couple of slides that require communication. These are things that I'm required to tell the Commissioners. The first is related to significant accounting policy. Management's the one that's ultimately responsible for determining what accounting policies are used at the county. Those haven't changed from the prior year. They're all disclosed in Note 1 of the basic financial statements. And we, we do review the policies that the county has and have determined that they are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. During the year though, the county did implement a new GASB standard related to SEVITAS, which is subscription-based IT arrangements. And that resulted in an additional lease liability and a leased asset on your financial statements for $45,000. It was pretty immaterial to the county. Also, just so you know, that the financial statements have a lot of judgment and accounting estimates included within them. They haven't changed from the prior year in terms of how they're calculated. Some of those are actually actuarially determined. So as part of our audit, we do review those judgments and estimates made to make sure that they are reasonable. And then on the next slide, from a relationship standpoint, we received full cooperation from county management as well as a third party that helped with the accounting. There was no disagreements with management on accounting policies or financial reporting matters. As part of the audit, we do require the finance director and the accounting manager to sign a management representation letter. This is very standard with all audits. We actually have to receive that letter before we can issue. And basically, management is referring to us, the audit firm, that the information they provided during the audit was accurate, complete, and the best information they had at the time. From, in terms of consulting with other accountants, we are not aware that management consulted with any other accountants besides ourselves and their third-party firm that helps them. If there was any significant issues that came up during the audit, those are discussed amongst the teams. From an audit adjustment perspective, there were audit adjustments that came as part of the audit. Management made all of those adjustments and that resulted in no past audit adjustments and no uncorrected. So basically, everything we asked them to post to the ledger, they did. From a disclosure standpoint, your financial statements has over 100 pages of disclosures. As part of our audit, we do review the disclosures to make sure that they are overall neutral, consistent, and they provide clarity to the financial statements. And then there is a disclosure up here that our responsibility for other information in the financial statements doesn't extend beyond the information in the report. And then it's kind of discuss if you intend to publish information, you need to do the entire financial statements, not just portions of it. And then from an independence perspective, we do want you to know the N and J is independent with regard to the county and its financial reporting processes. So that's all the required communications. This next slide, a little hard to see, but it does offer you some information on some advisory services that our firm does have. We have several kind of listed out here related to strategy, operating and effectiveness and efficiency, transportation and performance management. These are just things that we could do, possibly do outside the audit. It depends on which one. Sometimes these advisory services could impair our independence. So as your auditor, we would not be able to do some of these, but this just gives you an idea. Our firm does offer additional services. And then the next slide is about two accounting pronouncements that are coming. Statement number 100 is related to accounting changes and error corrections. That's applicable for fiscal year 2024. Essentially, if you have any accounting changes or error corrections, we potentially have, we may have to restate or provide additional disclosures. And then statement 101 is coming up related to compensated absences. That's not applicable to fiscal year 2025, but the county does need to start collecting data for this implementation because they're going to be coming up with an estimate that's going to require historic information. So that's something that we've been discussing with finance to make sure that they start getting that information together. Because when we review it, fiscal year 2025, we're going to look, be looking for historic data. And then the next slide is new accounting pronouncements. And this is the exact same slide I presented last year. There are three projects that are going on right now and they have not moved very much. So this just gives you an idea. There are some things coming down the pipeline. And when they do come out, we'll make sure that finance is aware of any impact to the county. And this is our last slide, but as additional service Molson Jenkins offers, anyone that needs continuing education, the ability to attend four different trainings throughout the year. Sometimes we have a little bit more, but you at least have quarterly training that is all day long if anybody needs any CPE. That's free of, free of charge. And that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Do another how many counties have gotten their audit opinion at this time?
No. I don't know. I don't have that type of information. Generally, counties are very hard to get in by the October 31st deadline. That's the local government commission. That's their original deadline. And then they extend the deadline out to December 1st. The extension just keeps you from having to file an extended contract. But I was mentioning to Kyle earlier, I have a county that hasn't issued and they didn't receive their actual opinion until Friday. So some of these things are not, you know, county-specific. But there are several counties in North Carolina that have not issued at this time. But we issued before December 1st this year, so we are very excited about that.
We are too.
We are too.
Very much so.
Does anybody else have anything?
You know, you called me today. I presented to us last year.
Okay.
And one thing, you asked me if I had any concerns about the budget. And I told you the reason I voted against the September 7th audit was because, you know, in the past, we have been given a chance to look over the audit and ask you questions. And you said, you know, you could try to work different style of that. I'm happy that we got the budget done in time. I'm pretty sure you've done a wonderful job. But you know, I'd like to be able to see the book, the audit ahead of time so that we have to ask you questions. After like what we have now, you know, it's nothing I can ask questions about, you know, if I have them. So I'm going to vote against the September 7th audit.
Okay.
But I appreciate everything you've done and I'm sure you've done a good, great job.
Are you meaning you don't have a copy of the financial statements because we issued at the end of November?
Waiting for a bound copy, I guess.
Okay, because I guess that's the third party that would provide the bound copy because we just provide the opinions and they write it. But I'm happy to send you an electronic version too at any time.
I'm sure you've done a wonderful job, but we have not obtained a copy. We knew you were coming. So like I said, I appreciate you getting the audit done in time. I'm a new department with audits and I like to be able to see it ahead of time and ask questions.
Sure, I understand.
Any other questions or comments?
Move to approve the audit financial statement, that's true.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, need further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Motion carries four to one. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And happy holidays.
You too.
Now, County Attorney, do you have any pearls of wisdom at this time?
No comments.
Okay. My only comment is going to be I hope everyone has a safe, Merry Christmas. And it's not just a cliche. We've known the reason for the season, the birth of a child.
Don't forget the LCC breakfast in the morning at 8:00, like seven o'clock.
Eight to, eight to 10 maybe?
Yeah, 8 to 10.
I think. Okay. Any other Commissioner's recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
I congratulate Kyle Wareham, Commissioner of New project, and former Chief Lee Whitburn for his many years at Seppton's Park. Many citizens have expressed concerns about the recent annat plan for a new industrial park. This is because existing industrial site in Washingtonburg has seen good, good development over the years despite significant taxpayer investment. Citizens are questioning whether the county has abandoned efforts to develop the Washingtonburg site or to pursue a new project instead. They also wonder why more effort has not been made to recruit businesses to the existing site rather than developing a new industrial park. I would like to request that the county issue a statement addressing this concern. The statement should offer reassurance to indicate that the county is not abandoning the Washingtonburg site and explain why there is a need for a new industrial park when the current one has seen very little growth. The statement should explain how the new industrial park will have greater development potential to improve infrastructure and strategic partnerships with private investors, reassuring taxpayers that their money will not go to waste. I also want to request the County Attorney to look into troubling and confusion and breakdown in communication regarding the termination of the Fort Run EMS contract. I have been deeply at war on a phone hearing accounts from multiple parties that contain disturbing disparises about the termination of the... This situation became evident when I reviewed closely the letter the County Attorney sent to Chief Laurie Carter Jr. in response to his own inquiry in this matter. As you remember from my meeting on August 21st, the termination letter was said to have been mailed to the department on June 13th. Meanwhile, Chief Carter and Fort Run firefighters insist that no such letter was ever received. The files laid out in the County Attorney's response letter may have shown to be like, perhaps explaining why Fort Run never got the word of their termination. Not only was the termination letter not sent by certified mail, it was sent to the department's physical address where no mailbox exists. It is now clear to me that we should have never terminated Fort Run's contract before gathering further facts to explain why the department claimed that no notice was received. Rushing ahead in this matter has undercut the public trust our duties as county representative. Therefore, I would strongly argue that the County Attorney to provide support to remedy this situation, restore the confidence that we have lost and prevent such errors from going forward. I've also received numerous inquiries this past week from certain citizen inform regarding the changes to county commissioners' compensation. I have, some have highlighted disparity between the approved budget and the detailed provided publicly about our current salary. Despite my own best effort to be transparent and responsive, I realize that some individuals are drawing their own conclusions regarding this to the files. While there is a lot of vanity to some of the concerns raised, it is clear that it's also a lot of misinformation circulating. To remedy this, I believe it's imperative that we are fully open about our aspect of our compensation. I want to state that revisiting this issue is not intended as complimenting on brother of the race who were warned. However, we made the mistake by not performing the public and asking transparency to be wrong and as our duty to correct it. I set my own role in allowing this to happen. The claim for a specific, the monthly salary for county commissioners to July 1st, 2002, was $480.23. As of July 1st, 2023, that increased to $1,000. As Mr. Salvador Arteta said, that represents a percentage raise of approximately 106% over that span. So what Mr. Salvador said is actually correct. However, we have been warned several times, the breaking competition around certain discussions might result in a bomb. So I'm going to ask that the Chairman and the other Commissioners issue a public statement correcting this misinformation. And if there's anything we need to do to correct this mistake, we'll correct it. I think the first step is offering a statement. Because like I said, there's some truth and there's a lot of misinformation going around. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, do I have a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Need further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. The ayes have the motions carried unanimously.
I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. May I move to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn and further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify sebiscuit.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Merry Christmas and...